All right, there we go, good to go.
We are good to go.
All right. I will call the order of the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, October 12th, at 2020 at 7:01 PM. I will begin with the role.
Elder person Cronin.
Present.
Elder person Journey.
Here.
Elder person Kemp.
Here.
Elder person Cole.
Here.
Elder person Posey.
Here.
Elder person Ricky.
Here.
Elder person Ryan.
Here.
Elder person Touche.
Present.
All right, next we'll move on to item three, public comments. I understand we have some speakers today.
Correct, I have five people signed up. First person is Jesse Charles, and I do not see him, so I'm gonna have to skip him.
We can come back.
Yeah, we can come back to him, okay. Next person I have up is Brian Munson.
All right.
Can you hear me? All right, well, thank you for just a brief second here this evening. Here speaking on behalf of Steve Brown Apartments and the Alexander Company, we're excited to be back in front of the council. And really what you see on the agenda tonight is a translation of the RFP into zoning. The design, the concept, everything that you see in the zoning document is framed around the original concept. And we're happy to be back to bring in front of you the opportunity to take that first step into implementation. The general development plan is just that, the general framework that will guide all of the implementation moving forward in the project. And we are happy to really take those first steps in concert with the city. We appreciate the staff's thorough review of the application and the conditions they placed on it. We had a good conversation with the Plan Commission. In fact, you can see in your packet some initial thoughts about some quick responses back towards opportunities potentially to expand the open space. But really, this framework becomes the guide for implementing each of the projects as they move forward. So every step past this becomes much more detailed and thorough. So you'll see the architecture, the site plans, landscaping, the civil engineer, and all the pieces that make this project happen come back in front of you in the next steps. We're excited that this lays the groundwork to translate again that RFP into action and really moving towards implementing the project in the exciting way. So we're happy to be here tonight. Also on the call, we've got Dan Seely with Steve Brown and Colin Cassidy with the Alexander Company. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. But again, happy to be back and really moving things forward toward the next pieces of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up I have Ryan Kimmitt.
Do you want to try to unmute?
We're getting there.
Again, okay.
Okay, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I just wanted to chime in and lend my support to the Sugar Creek Commons development. I understand that it's going to be a big upheaval for the neighborhood there, but I feel like it will add a lot to our downtown area, both in the sense that we will have much more walkable places.
You're breaking up a little bit.
If she's, if she's holding her phone, she might be holding it where the antenna is, just so she's aware. So you might want to adjust where your hand is on the phone.
Okay, is that better?
It is.
Okay, sorry, yeah, so I just wanted to say that I, as a new business owner in Verona, I think that having the affordable housing there is going to be a boon for us. I think that having the walkable green space to all the neighborhoods that are currently there, not go away after Sugar Creek is gone will be a big deal. Basically, I just wanted to voice my support and make sure that we keep things moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I saw Jesse Charles join.
Okay, we can jump to Jesse.
Okay.
Next up is Jesse Charles. Jesse just left, do you want to jump next one?
Yeah, maybe he's having an internet.
Okay, next up I have Jeff Johnson. I just talked to Jeff 20 minutes ago, so I know he's interested in speaking.
Okay. I imagine Jesse is too, but you know, what can you do about internet problems?
Okay, Jeff, we see you. Jeff, we can't hear you.
Hello?
Yep, hold on Jesse, you're not up.
Oh my gosh. No, no, it was on, it was on our end.
Yep. Jeff, do you want to, do you want to try calling in Jeff?
Do you see Jesse could go?
Yeah, we can have Jesse go while we figure it out and then loop back.
I have to let you guys know something, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I just discovered that if people just opened up Zoom and punched in the meeting ID, they're actually in a different room right now, and they're all wondering where you guys are, and there's like eight people in there.
Oh, that's not good.
Okay, but if you click the link from the agenda, you're brought to this room. So I'm not sure what happened with Zoom, but there's actually a room with people in it who, like me, the first time just punched in the meeting ID and Zoom put them in this other room. I'm not sure how to remedy that, but I wanted to let you know because I was with them up until about a minute ago, and I realized there's like two Zooms happening right now for this meeting.
So that's, that's not good.
If you want, if you want to continue, I can pop over there and try to tell them like, click the link from the agenda. I'm not sure if they all have that URL, but I can try my best to get them over here and I can come back.
Yeah, we would appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Sure. I just got a message that we're not coming through on YouTube at all, so is that maybe the other room?
No, the other ones definitely, definitely Zoom, because I just opened Zoom app and put in the digit code, and that's how I ended up in the other, the other room. But I'll hop in there and try to help people find this one, so just save my spot.
Okay. Okay, so let's see you guys.
Jesse's been helpful since kindergarten, I can tell you all that.
I see YouTube working, so I guess we were due to have some problems.
I'm not sure how to fix that one.
The Zoom one, yeah, I mean, hopefully he can get people over here.
I'm looking at the agenda and the IDs are all the same, so I don't know what's going on.
Hopefully get some people over here.
I also don't have any breakout rooms set up on this one, I don't know what, how they can be in the room, I'm not sure.
The only thing I could think of is, is that the link doesn't match the ID. Like somehow the hyperlink is pointing to a different room.
It looks good to me, I'm looking at it now.
It's the same?
Yeah, it's the one I copied over from Zoom, all right, I'm trying to get Jeff here.
Just letting you know the message I got shows a black screen on YouTube.
Hi, this is Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you Jeff.
Okay, great. I had my IT person here, and I guess she must have figured something out, that's great. I guess I want to thank you for allowing us to talk. We have our house on Plimpton Street, and in its present form, we're against the new plan development. I guess due to a few reasons, one is the height of the building at four stories. When I drive around that part of town, I don't see any other buildings that are that tall. And that height, it kind of shades out all the houses that are behind there. The other thing that we don't like or why we're against it is the lack of green space. And it doesn't seem like there's a large amount of playground area when there's, if there's going to be a bunch of kids living with their folks in these apartments, which kind of raises a safety issue with the street, with the traffic for the folks driving. And if the kids don't have a place to play, or they got to walk a long distance to get to a park, you know, that's an issue. And with the traffic is, the traffic density in that area with the size of the current streets, it just seems like it's going to be very congested in that, with that development. Now, we just bought our property there a little over a year ago. And of course, this is my own little personal beef, we bought the house, we bought the house because it was a nice house, a residential area, not a house with a big apartment building facing the street. You know, had that been there, we might have made a different decision on whether we buy that property or not, which then kind of has some concerns for us for the value of our property going forward into the future. I guess my last little concern is for all the folks that maybe aren't in favor of this project who are not comfortable with being on a Zoom meeting or calling in. And we ourselves, as you can saw, have a few problems. So my concern is, I don't know if we're hearing from all the people, or at least a large number of people that are currently in that neighborhood. Back in the old days, people would get in their car, drive to this meeting, and if you saw a meeting with 50 homeowners in it, you'd say, wow, maybe this is an issue. Right now, I don't know if you're hearing from those folks, because you almost didn't hear from me.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Should we move on to, did Jesse Charles rejoin us?
He did, and he left again.
We have one more speaker, right?
Correct, I have Sean O'Brien and go Sean.
Okay.
And what I'm being told by a few people is YouTube is working, so I'm not aware of any issues on YouTube.
Evening everyone.
Good evening.
I'm going to assume that that last speaker was referencing our project, although they didn't say which project they were opposing. But those are typically the feedback that we've gotten, some of the concerns that we've gotten. Although I know that you have a very long schedule tonight, I'll try to make this as quick as possible. So thank you for your time and for considering our mixed-use housing proposal at the Old National Bank and the Classic Site. We are really excited about this opportunity and the partnerships that we've created over the past year that we've been working on this project. I do want to applaud the city on their desire to bring redevelopment along West Verona Avenue, as well to strive for affordable housing opportunities in the Verona community. As you may know, Verona has the highest job or household ratio of any city in Dane County, and in its history has never had a tax credit workforce housing project. And so, you know, we're really excited to bring an opportunity to Verona that combines both mixed use and affordable housing. When it comes to affordable housing redevelopment, I can tell you that strong partners and strong partnerships are essential. When I was the director at WIDA, I was tasked with setting the state's affordable housing policy. I ran the tax credit program, and over the last five years of my tenure, I closed over a billion dollars in workforce housing to small business loans. That experience taught me not only how to utilize the tax credit program, but also know what partnerships are needed to create win-win scenarios for projects, cities, and neighborhoods. So speaking of partnerships, you know, our first partnership that we tried to establish on this project with the city staff. And when we put the classic tavern under contract, we approached the city with a multifamily-only concept for just a classic site, to which we were suggested that, you know, by staff, that we might want to consider a mixed use and possibly reach out to Old National. It was our understanding that many developers had attempted to get Old National to sell, but all had little success. And so despite others' attempts and, you know, pandemic that created a lot of havoc for businesses over the spring and summer, we actually were able to convince Old National Bank to partner and make a significant investment in Verona. You know, so our second partnership, you know, definitely was Old National Bank. And I'd like to just read an email that Corey Mills, who's the corporate facilities director, sent to the mayor in July. And I'll skip the pleasantries and just get to the meat. It says, "As we look and hope for the future, Old National Bank is pleased to state our interests and in support of the project North Point Development is proposing on and around the current bank branch property. We believe in Verona, and we very much like our current location. And we are quite excited about the proposed improvements, believing this will benefit the neighborhood and the entire city as we join forces with local developers to help improve a truly fine property. I write to you today to let you know that should you have any questions regarding Old National's role or support of this project, I'm your point of contact. Thank you in advance. We believe that we will all benefit from the proposed changes on Verona Avenue." You know, after we, we met with the Common Council in June, you know, we did hear some solid feedback on this proposal. So we had submitted an application to the county's Affordable Housing Fund. And we were quite excited to, you know, to find out that the county had picked this project to invest their Affordable Housing Fund dollars, especially again, given during the pandemic. You know, the press release that the county put out that said, in the midst of this COVID-19 pandemic now more than ever, it's critically important that we focus on partnerships like these to create more affordable housing in our community. And we know that housing affordability is one of the greatest challenges in every community that will face, the pandemic continues. The county's support for these projects is an important step in our ongoing work to make affordable housing more accessible. So, you know, some people might ask, okay, well, a million dollars, actually it's a million, $150,000 per project. That doesn't seem like a lot of money in the grand scheme of things. And I think if you're arguing that, you know, the million, $150,000 isn't a lot, you know, I would, I could agree, except for it's not the $1,150,000 we're really interested, it's the $10 million in tax credit equity that we're competing for, that's the big deal. So this fund is exciting to see that, you know, they're interested in bringing affordable housing to Verona and are willing to make an investment into it. And I think it really benefits the community overall. It extends the affordability of the project with these funds, we have to have the affordability extended to 35 years. There'll be significant upgrades and sustainable design features, including solar panels on the roof that eliminate over 90% of the common area usage. And most importantly, these funds will allow us to finance the proposal, the one that we're presenting to you tonight, without any city assistance. So in the beginning of our conversation, we did talk about requesting TIF funds, the benefit to the community with having these county funds, that we no longer need TIF or city assistance in order to make this project work. One of the last partnerships I want to talk about is that North Point will be the main developer on this project, but will also be co-developing the project and mentoring an emerging minority developer. This partnership will allow the co-developer an opportunity for growth and experience and capacity building through an ownership role. North Point will remain the key decision-maker and guarantor on the project, but we will be bringing, you know, others to the, to the mix to help them get into the program as well. So I do want to talk just specifically about the proposal, and I'll try to keep things moving along there. We have had a lot of changes since it was last in front of you since June. Again, we left those meetings with some good feedback. We continue to receive, and this is significant amount of support from both residents and small business owners in Verona, for both our proposal and for our, you know, our options to bring affordable housing into the city. We did hear some concerns at Plan Commission, and we do continue to work through these concerns and believe if we did have more time, you know, given the deadlines for the tax credit program, that we could have gotten past those concerns. And please know that I, as well as city staff, believe that we can overcome these concerns. I do want to very quickly show you our updated proposal. So the last time you saw this plan, we had it fairly similar, where the, you know, housing and retail aligned West Verona Avenue, with some retail going up Rita. We heard some concerns at the last Plant Commission meeting that had to deal with parking, playground, you know, privacy, you know, traffic and some other things. And so we came back with a proposal that reduced the total unit count by five, from 80 to 75 units. We reduced the commercial space by 2,500 square feet. And what I really want you to see on this plan is just the amount of open green space that we have by having the building stay just along Verona Avenue. We have added a fenced playground in the significant fenced playground area in the upper north. I guess this is northeast corner of the property with a bridge that goes over our parking garage and outdoor patio. Significant green space for stormwater and, you know, one of the other main benefits to this plan was that we were able to pull the building significantly further away from the neighbors. So we felt like this was a really good option, and it was one that, given the concerns we heard in October, I'm sorry, in September, we were able to get back with, you know, again, 75 units. Some of the other concerns we had heard was, you know, too many three-bedroom units with families. I just want to kind of highlight that we only have 14 three-bedrooms. Two of those are going to be market rate units, 12 of those apartments are going to be set aside for families earning 50% of county median income. So for those who don't know, a family of four at 50% of county median income is about $50,000 a year. And their rent with utilities would be about $1,300. So, you know, whatever your perception may be, or concerns may be about the families that might be going in here, know that a significant amount of these units are one-bedroom. We do have three-bedroom units, and they're targeted towards working families. And we would set a preference actually on our rentals that these units get rented first to working families from Verona or folks who are employed in Verona. So it's a waiting list preference that we can have. And essentially, if two people apply at the same time, that housing unit goes to someone who either works or lives in Verona. So some of the renderings that we had of the building, as you will know, that the, the project will have multifamily housing on the east side and then retail on the west. One of the things I like to point out is that this is two parcels, again, it's Old National Bank, who really wants to stay on the corner and be a part of this redevelopment in the classic site. So if you can look at it as two parcels and possibly even two developments, you have a classics redevelopment that has a multifamily project and retail, basically, you know, at your Old National Bank. And these are all renderings that were shown to, to the Plan Commission, except for the very last one. I will say, you know, one of the concerns at Plan Commission also was the walkouts that we have on some of the units that align Verona Avenue. This is actually quite desirable housing amenity, where you would walk out and be part of an active, walkable downtown. So we do view that as an amenity, not a concern. And then here is a rendering that we didn't get to show the Plan Commission last time, because we just haven't done it yet. This is a view of the back of the building. And as you can see, it's very, the building's very far away, and by the fact that we have some step backs, you know, you go from a three-story building, slightly up to a four-story and then back down to a three. Not only, again, does this plan allow for the most green space and most viable use on the site, but it also gives us some nice amenities like a rooftop terrace and, you know, a community terrace at the top of the building as well. So additional space there, and you will see it kind of the retail section that we're building along Rita Avenue. I did want to show you one plan. So what happens if we, you know, couldn't convince Common Council that, you know, height was a concern and that stepping up to four stories, albeit just a handful of feet more, was more desirable? I wanted to show you one plan that we ran past Old National, and given the couple of weeks that we had to go from four stories down to three, we just couldn't get there. We couldn't come up with a plan that met everyone's needs. And the more that we dug into it, the more we found it to be less desirable, I think, for, you know, the neighbors as a whole. So here you'll see the plan where we bring the driveway in on the west side of the property. And to really utilize the site, we have to start bringing the building back towards the neighbors. And this would be the same thing as well, is if we didn't have the old national site, and we had to start bringing an L-shaped building back towards the neighbors on this property. As you'll see, very little room for green space and a lot of a big building near. And so we also wanted to kind of show what that would look like in terms of massing. So as you can see here, this is what a three-story building would look like in terms of massing if we were to pull it back towards the neighbors versus what we have now, which is a three-story with a step up in the middle. Again, what we would look at having versus what we're proposing. So, you know, we're hoping that, you know, with, with the renderings, you would get a good idea of, okay, well, is it more desirable to have a larger building that takes up a majority of the space? Or something that, you know, steps up and allows for, you know, additional commercial and other amenities as well? So from, I guess I'll just wrap this up from a resource perspective. Please know that this project will not compete against Alexander's proposal, I think their proposal is fantastic. It's going after a different resource at WIDA than what we're going after. And as a local developer, you know, I want to say that you can trust that this will be done in the right way and will be a success. You know, our business is based on a reputation with WIDA and our investors. And besides that, bank and the market rate tenants, which will have approximately a quarter of the tenants be market rate, you know, they'll keep us in line, so this will not become, you know, a problem property or nuisance like what I did read in the paper, unfortunately, the comments that I read in the Verona Press about this project. I will be around for questions, and, but I do request that you talk with staff and consider the many benefits of this proposal and that we try to work together for as a solution, you know, so we don't have to necessarily lose any of the progress remained. And lastly, I just want to leave you with one additional number. And that's $10,250,000. And this is a number we used to like to quote at all of our groundbreakings for affordable housing projects when I was at WIDA. But this is approximately the amount of money that tenants will get to keep in their pockets instead of being rent burdened and paying market rents if they lived at the site over the 35-year affordability period. And obviously, that amount of money can be used in the community, it can be used by the tenants on food or school supplies. And so we do think, you know, that this is a really good opportunity, and we would like to be able to have a chance to try to bring this proposal to Verona and request that you support it. So thank you so much for your time, and thank you, Mayor, for letting me do my, my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just, I think what happened with the dueling Zoom-
Um, yeah, just, I think um what happened with the doing Zoom meetings is if you go to the city website. And you click view the most recent agenda, it will take you to the joint city town fire meeting, which is for the nineteenth. Um, so I'm gonna guess there's like eight people logged into a future city town meeting that's happening next week. Um, I appreciate people wanting to be ahead of schedule, um, but I feel like. That's very confusing, because I feel like if you click most recent agenda, you're gonna assume it's gonna take you to today's agenda. Um, unfortunately, I cannot, uh, I don't think I can join a second Zoom meeting to tell people. Um, but I think, I think that's what happened, and this is of course not normally a a issue when we're meeting in person, but. Uh, uh, in line with the earlier speaker, I I share his frustrations about meeting electronically. So I'm not sure if we can do anything about that, Adam, but we could, of course, call Jesse up since he was uh registered to speak.
I I can't do anything, because if I leave this meeting, the whole meeting will probably end, so.
Which would be, which would make it worse.
Correct, so I will, I can call Jesse up here, though.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me, hear me, guys?
Yes.
Yeah, Luke, I think you nailed it, when I went back in, I realized my error, I had done exactly that, but when I went in the second time. It said the police fire commission, it said the meeting hasn't started yet and there was no one in there, so I'm not sure. How I saw eight people before and then now, so I apologize, I think that was just me. Getting excited and clicking wrong thing, because I'm all nervous about talking to the city council, you guys, I can't be expected to. To track all that, but um, cool, well, so, good news, no one was there when I went in the second time, so. Hopefully they're in the process of getting this one, but um, yeah, so just a couple of minutes, thank you everyone for having this public comment tonight. I'm Jesse Charles from the Verona Area Historical Society, and I appreciate the time. I just a, just two minutes here of things I just wanted to to say before this meeting, first off is I always have to start with a thank you. For the CDA, the common council, Steve Brown and Alexander Company for the emphasis that's been placed on saving the graded graded school building. That's amazing, it's a huge win for Verona, I can't understate that, so I I like to start with a thank you. Because that's been at the the front of people's minds for most of this project. Um, graded school just to create massively important socially, historically accurate to when it was a school, which I guess, well, technically it was a year ago, but to when it was built. Um, well documented, hopefully very reusable, so that was the the building that really, really, really mattered the most on that land. I've, a little update, I've been contacted by both Alexander Company and Steve Brown Apartments regarding the national register process. And about reuse of the of the building by both of their leaderships, I think that's a great show of faith on their part. And I really like that they're waiting for community inputs. To know what to do with the graded school building, and we're gonna try to help to get the word out to get that input. Uh, a quick note, I I missed the Plan Commission meeting last week, but I know there was a question, because I saw Adam's notes about the historical relevance of the little house on. The northwest corner of South Marietta and West Verona Avenue. And there was a note in there saying, is that a historic house? Which um, I just wanted to say a couple of words on that, you know, his historic relevancy is kind of subjective for me, it's. Does an object, what what story does it tell about your city or culture? Uh, is it physically similar to when it was relevant and how rare is it? Uh, for that specific house, it's maybe nineteen tenish is the best date we could find. There are other four square wood framed houses, it was very popular in Verona at that time in nineteen teens, um, Mike Hanker moved one. To become the branded image now you might be familiar with, so we do have other ones. We know it was a parsonage for the church, it was on Church Church Street, but we don't really know much about that house in general. And um, thinking back, when this whole thing started in twenty sixteen, early on. I I I kind of knew, and I think I can say we, I spoke to other officers, that. With this parcel being redeveloped, there was gonna have to be a compromise, there was three old structures on there, even this house was in some of the early, early um designs. So we kind of knew you've got the graded school building, new century, you've got Sugar Creek, you've got this cool old parsonage, which I enjoy looking at every time I went by, and. We kind of realized that, you know, I I think our job as a historical society is to make sure we keep the things that we really need to keep and to advise the city and developers on what those things are. And what the stories are, and I think we're making a good choice here in this plan. For this redevelopment, where we're focusing on the new new century, I keep calling that the graded school building, which is just insanely important to the story of Verona. And I think the compromise of having to say goodbye to the Sugar Creek building, which, you know, it's a half century school there and to the cool parsonage. I think it's a good call, and I think we're focusing on the right, the right thing there, so I just wanted to reply, respond to that question since it was at the. At the Plan Commission, that is always sad to see something old go, um, but I think in this case, we're focusing on the right part of this parcel to be preserved. Um, yeah, so I just wanted to mention that, and um Dan Sealy from Steve Brown did talk to me this week, and they are up for. Giving the house to someone who is willing to move it. And I'm gonna try to get the word out with our society, and I'm gonna talk to some other local historical societies, because it would be even better for someone to really. You know, the next chapter of that little house, the story to be moved and and somewhere else, I don't know if. Now, we, you can help to get the word out too, but I know the next year we're gonna be spreading it a lot, so. I'll be dialed in, if you have any any other questions about the historical well, historical relevancy of that house of Sugar Creek or of. Graded school, feel free to call my name, and I'll promise to be in the right Zoom meeting this time, but. Yeah, great, thank you all for your time, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, uh, any other speakers?
No, those are the people I had on my list.
All right, uh, with that, we'll move on to uh item four, which is approval of the minutes from the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty common council meeting. Uh, questions, comments, or motions? Uh, all the call, motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, uh, last chance for uh corrections to the minutes. Seeing no hands, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty common council meeting, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? Shoot, oppose, no? And the minutes are approved, under mayor's business, I just uh have one thing, thank you all for um working through this stuff remotely, I am. Not really a huge fan of it, I like meeting in person, it's a lot easier to talk to people, it's a lot easier to figure out public comment, it's a lot more intuitive. Um, we don't have to have people sign up in advance, so, you know, thank you um everyone for bearing with us and um. I don't know when when everyone's guesses are in, but I'm hoping by Q two next year, we can be back to normal, but. We'll see, thank you all for bearing with it, uh, next we'll move on to item six, which is announcements. Um, anyone on the council have any announcements? Uh, seeing no hands, we'll move on to item seven, the administrative report, uh, Mr. Sayer.
Uh, thank you, we have a few meetings coming up, we have the Fitch Verona EMS Commission Annual Meeting on October fifteenth. Uh, we have the Joint City Town Fire Protection Meeting, which is next Monday, the nineteenth at six thirty P M. Um, and the Tourism Commission Meeting in October has been been canceled. Um, kind of a couple of updates on COVID, you know, we as staff continue to kind of monitor the situation. We are seeing more staff that actually have been infected with with COVID, and they're being quarantined as the procedures and CDC and Dane County requirements are. Have required and uh we're following through with those, even the exposures as well, obviously. Uh, as of now, we have not been impacted from a staffing level or operations standpoint, but we do continue to monitor the situation around the county and around the state. And we're gonna make adjustments as needed uh kind of moving forward, so. Um, as of right now, knock on wood, you know, like I said, nothing major has hit the city with a, you know, any type of outbreak, but it's 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 here, obviously, we all know that, but. Um, it's 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 not gonna get any better anytime soon, so um, we'll continue to adjust and move forward. Uh, prescription drug takeback day is still on, October twenty fourth, that will be at City Hall from nine A M. to two P M. Uh, this will allow people to drop off prescription drugs for proper disposal. Uh, there is a free, uh, there's a bike donation that'll be occurring on November seventh at the fire station, that's a part of a free bikes for kids donation. Um, the fire station is just the location, these bikes can be dropped off, uh, if you donate a bike. It'll be available available and uh given to low income and first populations throughout Dane County, so they they fix them up and then they they give them away, so. Uh, there is a website link in my administrator report, if you are interested in reading more about that. Election update, uh, so as of October seventh, we had uh more than a hundred people have signed up and volunteered to be poll workers, that's a a record number for us, so just thank you to the community. Uh, we've had a great kind of turnout in showing of support, uh, people wanting to help with this election, so that's great, and we hope that continues in the future. Uh, we have approximately ninety six hundred people that have registered to vote in the city. Of which uh five thousand absentee ballots have been requested, and out of that approximately five thousand absentee ballots, approximately twenty eight hundred. Uh, two thousand eight hundred have been returned already, so we're roughly over halfway through the number of um. Absentee ballots that we have out there right now, they they keep coming in steadily throughout the day. Um, we continue to encourage people to actually drop them actually at City Hall, that's the way you know we're gonna get it versus putting in the mail. You put it in the box in the lobby, or if you put it in the box in the parking lot. Uh, we check those multiple times a day, we check it before we leave every day, so I would just continue to encourage people to use those drop boxes at City Hall, because they are being checked. On a regular basis, uh, we also recommend that if anyone is returning an absentee ballot within seven days of the election. Don't put it in the mail, drop it at City Hall if you can, uh, if there are delays in the mail for some reason. Uh, that is the way you can guarantee it will get into our hands, so it will be counted, so. Once again, just please drop that at City Hall when in doubt, we're we more than happy to take them. In person, not in person, but in the drop boxes versus in the mail. Um, we do have some early voting that starts the week of October twentieth at City Hall. Um, it will go from October twentieth to twenty third, it'll be a Saturday voting, early voting in the twenty fourth. And then some more voting from the twenty sixth to the thirtieth. Uh, we'll also have early voting at Senior Center on the twenty third and twenty fourth, and those dates and times have been listed in the administrative report. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, uh, Alder Kemp.
Um, I have a question regarding the prescription drug takeback event and the bike event, are there gonna be like. Proper social distancing or, you know, COVID preventative measures taken, are we like disinfecting the bikes when they come in, that kind of thing?
So, so, yes, the the drug takeback, uh, that'll be out in the the overhang outside of City Hall, so you've got that big overhang outside the front doors. And the the police officers will have the tables kind of set up, and there'll be proper distancing with that. Um, so that one's gonna be typical of past years as well, where you have to open your your bottle of pills and actually dump it into a container. So that one uh will obviously have all the precautions in place. The bike donation will just be, I think, a parking space or two where you can pull in, you can drop a bike off and then uh. Leave it, because they'll come back, I think, later that day or the next day, and then pick them up, so that's gonna be entirely outside in the parking lot, so. Um, I I assume they're gonna disinfect those, that's that's that that's kind of their process, but it's the fact that it's outside. And it's completely away from the station, we don't, we don't have any concerns with it.
All right, thank you.
Uh, other questions for Mr. Sayer? Uh, seeing no further hands, uh, we will move on to uh item eight, engineers report, uh, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the well six pumping station construction, while startup was held last week and a punch list of outstanding items is being developed. Contractor is wrapping up an operation and maintenance manual submitted and test results. The well will be allowed to be brought online after the D N R has completed its final inspection, the city is coordinating with the D N R on their fi- final inspection right now. For the woods at Cathedral Point Phase One, the curb has been poured for most of the project. Street base course placement is in progress, the storm sewer structure at the northeast corner of the project area is under construction. The water main and street improvements at the intersection. Of County Highway M and Range Trail continues to be on hold until gas and telecommunications utilities are relocated for the water main. And storm sewer improvements. For the Harmony Hills Detention Basin Cleanout, Medrell Excavating provided the low cost price quote. A purchase order for the work is being prepared, virtual public information meetings are scheduled for October fourteenth and twentieth through the Verona Library. Um, a new project, um, the North Main Street Storm Sewer Connection from T D S. Um, this work involves a new storm sewer connection in uh North Main Street from the private T D S property. Which currently has no storm sewer connection, and will also require relocation of existing utilities and repaving of disturbed areas. A pre-construction meeting was held last week, work in the right of way. Um, will begin this week, but that will be confined to the lowering of the electrical facilities near the T D S driveway. All other work in the right of way is tenant, is tentatively scheduled to begin the week of October nineteenth, so next week. Some night traffic detours are anticipated and will be announced via portable changeable message signs in advance of any closures or detour, detours. And finally, for the East Side Interceptor, the city received the contract documents. Um, on October seventh for review, once the contract is reviewed by staff and executed. A pre-construction conference with the contractor will be scheduled and the public information will be held virtually with adjacent property owners. In late October or early November, construction is anticipated to start in early November. And with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you, uh, any questions on the engineers report? Uh, seeing no questions, uh, we'll move on to item nine, committee reports, first up, we have nine A Finance Committee, uh, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, first I'll start by making a motion regarding the payment of the bills in the amount of four hundred and forty eight thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and sixty six cents.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, uh, Alder Kemp.
Uh, thank you, for the sake of discussion, uh, there was a payment in the amount of fifty one thousand, twenty eight dollars and ten cents to Middleton Ford for dump truck parts. Uh, a payment to A E Com for various ongoing projects in the amount of eighty two thousand, one hundred and eighty seven dollars and seventy five cents. Also, we paid forty two thousand, five hundred dollars to Cracks Filling Service Corporation for filling numerous cracks in the city streets. And then we also made up our final payment, Refinements Park to K S W Construction in the amount of sixty six thousand, seven hundred and thirty six dollars and eight cents.
Thank you for that explanation, uh, questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Uh, seeing no hands, uh, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? That motion passes, uh, Alder Kemp.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, asking the council to adopt resolution number R dash twenty dash zero three seven, amending the city fee schedule.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second about all their posing, uh, Alder Kemp.
Uh, again, uh, this is essentially a resolution amending the city fee schedule, um, there weren't too many changes, but this is something that we have to amend. From time to time, the city council has to approve this, there were no significant changes uh and in um finance. And we recommend approval of the current schedule, you will see the fee schedule on pages nineteen, twenty, twenty one. Twenty two, twenty three, twenty four of your packet.
Motion before the body, any uh questions or comments on this motion? Uh, seeing no hands, uh, all those in favor of resolution number R dash two zero dash zero three seven, amending the city fee schedule as described in the packet. Signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? That motion passes, uh, anything further from finance?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you, next we'll move on to nine B, uh, Plan Commission, uh, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, first up is discussion on possible action regarding. Resolution number R dash twenty dash two three eight, so I'd like to make a motion. To approve resolution number R dash twenty dash zero three eight, approving a precise implementation plan for a planned unit development. For a one story sixteen hundred square foot building addition located at five seventeen Half Mile Road.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey, uh, Alder Kemp.
The proposed uh precise implementation plan would allow for the construction of a sixteen hundred square foot addition to the Atkins Bicycle Shop. Located at five seventeen Half Mile Road, a Plan Commission highly required public hearing on October fifth, twenty twenty. And voted seven to zero to recommend for the approval of the P I P.
Thank you for that explanation, uh, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, Alder Ricky.
Just happy to be voting yes for this once again.
Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Uh, seeing no hands, uh, all those in favor of resolution number R dash two zero dash zero three eight. Approving a precise implementation plan for a planned unit development uh for a one story sixteen hundred square foot building addition located at five seventeen Half Mile Road, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes, uh, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, um, next I would like to make a motion approving resolution number R dash twenty dash zero three nine. Approving a general development plan for a planned unit development for a hundred and forty market rate apartments. One hundred and ten workforce apartments and ten thousand square feet of commercial space located at four twenty Church Avenue and one. One hundred and ten workforce apartments and ten thousand square feet of commercial space located at four twenty Church Avenue and one hundred South Marietta Street.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alder posing. Alder Cole.
The proposed general development plan would allow for the construction of one hundred and forty market rate apartments. One hundred and ten workforce housing apartments and ten thousand square feet of commercial space on approximately twelve point seven acres. The Plan Commission held the required public hearings on October fifth, twenty twenty. And public comments included concerns over the size of the green space being too small to support events. Support for workforce housing, eliminating the mixed-use building on the corner of South Marietta and West Verona Avenue. From the project to preserve the house. Movable of surface parking, concern with lighting levels, feeling that the neighbors' voices are not taken into account. For the design of the area and traffic calming measures for Church Avenue. Comments from the Plan Commission included standards and review of lighting. Church Avenue should maintain the existing street width and be friendly to pedestrians and bicyclists. More green spaces better. Could workforce housing become three stories instead of two stories to allow for more green space? Place structure should be included in design and is a private home on South Marietta Street and West Verona Avenue historic. The Plan Commission voted five to zero to approve the general development plan with the proposed zoning exemptions. And the condition that the GDP shall become effective upon Steve Brown Apartments and Alexander Company acquiring the property.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on this motion? Alder posing.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to, I think, all the concerns that were shared at Plan Commission are things that I definitely share. And just wanted to say that out loud. Especially, you know, making sure that the width of the streets allow for cycling. There's a lot of, if you look around right now especially. There's a lot of kids and people on bikes and with the. Curved lanes for the streets to slow down traffic, that also creates blind spots. For when you're trying to ride down the road and you've got a car right there and a kid's coming around and you can't see them and they can't see you. So I think that that's something that definitely needs to be taken into consideration. Is making sure that that takes, is addressed. But otherwise, and I would also share that I know that they talked about potentially having three stories for the workforce housing instead of. And but I definitely would be more in support of the two. Because that was one of the parts I really liked about that design is because it really had. A home feeling to it, so that folks as that fit into the neighborhood a little bit better was my feeling from that original design.
Thank you. Further questions or comments on this motion? I'll just rehash what I said at Plan Commission or some of the stuff anyways. I I think that we want to keep. The through-street church, you know, as as friendly to people walking and biking as possible. I don't think we want to encourage additional traffic in the neighborhood. You know, we should ultimately design the street around people and and not around anything else. I like to see more green space. And I definitely think we should work to make sure the lighting kind of stays. On the property itself, but you know, on the whole, I'm I'm pretty positive about it. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work with the developers on it. Any other additional comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of resolution number R dash two zero dash zero three nine. Approving a general development plan for a planning development for one hundred and forty market rate apartments, one hundred and ten workforce apartments. And ten thousand square feet of commercial space located at four twenty Church Avenue and one hundred South Marietta Street. With the condition noted by Alder Cole. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose no? That motion passes. Alder Cole.
Right. Next up, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty dash nine six nine. Zoning ten point three seven acres to urban residential from neighborhood residential. Approximately two point two five acres to central commercial from neighborhood residential. And neighborhood office located at four twenty Church Avenue and one hundred South Marietta Street.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alder Journey. Alder Cole.
The zoning map amendment would rezone ten point three seven acres to urban residential and approximately two point two five acres to central commercial. The zoning map amendment would rezone ten point three acres to urban residential. Approximately approximately two point two five acres to central commercial for the redevelopment of the New Century School slash Sugar Creek School. The Plan Commission held the required public hearings on October fifth, twenty twenty. And voted five to zero to approve the zoning map amendment to rezone ten point three acres to urban residential. And approximately two point two five acres to central commercial. With the condition that the zoning map amendment shall become effective upon Steve Brown Apartments and Alexander Company acquiring the property.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of ordinance number two zero dash nine six nine. Resoning ten point three seven acres to urban residential and neighborhood residential. And approximately two point two two five acres to central commercial from neighborhood residential. And neighborhood office located at four twenty Church Avenue and one hundred South Marietta Street. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose no? And that motion passes. Alder Cole.
Right. Next up is discussion on possible action regarding resolution number R dash twenty dash zero four zero. There's no motion yet at this time, so just a discussion. For a general development plan for a planned unit development for a four-story seventy-five unit apartment building. With six six thousand eight hundred ninety-five square feet of commercial space located at four ten and four twenty West Verona Avenue. The proposed general development plan would allow for the construction of a four-story seventy-five unit apartment building. Six thousand eight hundred ninety-five square feet of commercial space located at four ten and four twenty West Verona Ave. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on September eighth, twenty twenty for a GDP. For a four-story eight unit apartment building with nine thousand three hundred and nineteen square. Comment of the public hearing included concern for the height of the building. Workforce housing, revalue concerns if this is built. Want the reduction in the height building and the number of units, concerns with traffic in the neighborhood. Rita Avenue and access along West Verona Avenue, concerns on lighting in this area used to be a marsh area. The Plan Commission postponed the action on the request of the September Plan Commission meeting. The Plan Commission was presented a modified plan October fifth, twenty twenty for a four-story seventy-five unit apartment building. The six thousand eight hundred ninety-five square feet of commercials.
Oh, I think we lost you, Alder Cole.
Go ahead and pick it up from there?
Yes. Yeah, I guess she's.
The Plan Commission was presented with a modified plan on October fifth for a four-story seventy-five unit apartment building with six thousand eight hundred ninety-five square feet. Commercial space. Comments from the Plan Commission included discussion regarding the future traffic improvements. And potential solutions for the intersection with Rita Avenue and Legion Street. The impact these improvements would have on this development, access to the site, concern over the four-story building next to single-family homes. Discussion by a developer explaining why a three-story building is not feasible. Workforce apartment units should not have living room windows facing West Verona Avenue. And acknowledgement that this property has potential for redevelopment and workforce housing is important to the city. The Plan Commission voted five to zero to recommend denial of the project citing the proximity of a four-story building to single-family homes. Lack of commercial along West Verona Avenue, no playgrounds, and concerns to traffic flow around the property.
So at the moment, there is no, there is no motion since the Plan Commission recommended denial and generally. You don't vote on denial recommendations. But anyways, Alder Kemp?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this short and sweet. In principle, I like the idea of of developing this site. I don't think that we want to. Have numerous properties turn into light. We've seen that with a couple of other. Couple of other properties in the area, a couple of other sites that have been leveled. And are now just empty parking lots. I understand that, you know, developers are dealing with COVID. But we already have one across the street from this one. However, I do have some concerns when I, when I saw how the Plan, Plan Commission. Voted and the numerous concerns that they had, I'll be honest, some of them are the same concerns I had, particularly. The traffic and how that intersection lines up with Legion Street. I'm not a city engineer, I'm just a country lawyer, but my hope was that eventually someday. Those two streets can be lined up, so it makes sense and traffic can flow. Number two. If you stand on that parking lot and you you look at the homes that are there. And try and imagine a four-story building in your backyard, that's particularly trouble troubling. So while the, I think the the plan in and of itself is good, I like the idea of getting more workforce housing in Verona. We do need that. I like the ideas that they have for bringing in, you know. Veterans into that site. And then also, of course, he he mentioned tonight. The idea of partnering with different developers outside of his own team. I think that's really good and admirable. Without some changes, I would, my vote at this point would be no. I'd like to see the developer try and come back with a plan that that makes more sense. For that site and alleviate some of the concerns with traffic. Thank you. One minute.
Alder Trujay.
Thank you. I I definitely appreciate everything Alder Kemp said. You know, for me, the height of the building. Is less of a concern. It's a commercial space. I think when you. Your backyard is next to commercial, I think anything's possible and just need to accept that. What I do struggle with is the larger apartments that. Are really meant for families and not having space. For what you, what I'm going to assume are young families in there with kids. As someone who grew up in apartments and didn't have that. I know I wish I had. There was a lot of time where I felt cooped up. And just thinking of other people being put in that situation is not something that I would want others to be put into. So, I mean, my big reason to say no to this is really the lack of, I'll just say, recreational things for. Parents and their kids to have a place to go. I looked around in the map, looked for parks, and they're just really, other than the church, there really wasn't much there. So if it was single, uh, single room apartments, then I could see workforce being there and people, you know. I'll just say the epic people kind of working, coming and going. Lastly, traffic, gosh, how many apartments have we heard all the traffic concerns in the neighborhoods? And then when, at least I know when I followed up on them and I ask about it, it really isn't there. And they're like, yeah, there's more traffic, but it's never as big as what everyone's afraid it's gonna be. So. You know, my experience has kind of said, you know, it's always kind of a scare tactic, but it really doesn't play out. So. I'm in agreement, not voting for this mostly because I'm just thinking about the kids and needing a place to go to be active and be safe. Thank you.
No motion at the moment. Further discussion or motions, Alder posing?
Yeah, I was just commenting at this point. And I think when this first came to us. I shared that I was waiting to see how this process would play out, because I had my concerns about size. About size mainly being the big thing. It feels like this property is, and this design is kind of smushed. Into the neighborhood and into this plot. And that's what we've heard. And I know that over the summer where there was the neighborhood meeting, I didn't comment during it, but I was there. And all the comments that came up in Plan Commission came up there months ago. So when I sat here today and heard, well, we timeframe and we didn't have time to change it. All those things came up back in that first neighborhood meeting and then came up again in Plan Commission. So I think that that's something, I don't have a problem with the project. I actually love the partnerships. And love the concept of the project. The location is what I'm seeing an issue with. And especially, I have heard limited positive support for the project from the neighbors. So I would definitely side on their perspective and in this situation want to see. I'd love to see this project move forward in a different spot. And if we're going to continue with this spot, it does need to be, have less height to it is the main thing. I don't think a four-story building. Fits there especially looming out front and obviously we can't push it back. So where do we end up? It's not the right height for the right spot. Thank you.
Alder Ricky.
Are there any suggested workarounds for the fact that it's a marshy area? Any, I I'm just kind of coming at it from an environmental angle. Like, are there any things that can like? Help mitigate that and. And maybe provide more playground space, like if there were rooftop greenery. I mean, I think they mentioned. Solar panels, which is great, but something to do with. Plants growing on the building or some such thing.
Ms. Fisher, do you want to take a crack at the?
I I think there were some comments about groundwater being higher in the neighborhood. But the site itself is not particularly low. It does drain from east to west. There's a lower spot on the west side of the property. I mean, the city does have stringent stormwater management standards. There is required infiltration, so in some ways that is gonna contribute to groundwater, but. It's gonna be less than what's currently going. It it'll be a portion of what's currently going into the ground today. To mimic like the existing conditions for stormwater. So. I don't know if there, I mean, you could go above and beyond, but I don't know if there's anything that, like, by the ordinance that would require that. So as long as they're properly handling their water and not making things worse, like sending. More water, like, in a different direction, then there's, that's pretty much what we're looking for, is that they're mimicking the existing conditions and trying to improve. The stormwater runoff.
And then as far as the things about, you know, playgrounds or other green spaces, I think that would come down to what the property developer had in their designs. Alder Ryan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I have anything particularly unique to add, but I did want to acknowledge. The letters that I received and I I think other council members received from. The neighborhood, particularly folks on Rita Avenue. And they're, you know, quite concerned about this project for all the reasons that have been stated already. I think that it's important to state that. Me personally, and I think everyone on the council wants more affordable housing. Again, I think everyone is concerned about the. Size of the project on the footprint that's there and the height particularly. So. And, you know, the overwhelming. Five oh vote from. The commission against it, I think, is. You know, resounding, obviously. So that's all.
Further discussion? Alder Cole.
Let's say, I guess my feelings are a little bit different than everybody else's. Like, I've thought a lot about the safety concerns from the neighborhood residents. I guess my question is. What type of development then will be okay to go in there? Because this seems like, me, I think, I agree the height is a little too much, but in general. You know, something with workforce housing and then incorporating the bank and other businesses in there. To me seems like a good fit if we're going to continue this corridor of making it like a walkable area. So if we don't. It just seems like if, you know, we deny, you know, something like this, like what what's gonna be good enough to go into this spot? And the fact that this development company is, they're bringing in like a minority developer to come in and help. I think that's. Really awesome thing too. You know, they've secured really good funding for workforce housing. Yes, you know, I I personally thought it was a pretty decent development for this area and the local business owners have also. You know, been a resounding yes, like we want something in this area. It's just kind of a big empty parking lot at this point. So, you know, while taking into account the neighborhood concerns. Listening to other business owners in town who really want something there to help bring more people to their businesses, I think is also important as well. And. I, yeah, I guess, again, my thought is just like, well, if this isn't good enough, then what is gonna be good enough? To go into this area. It's a small footprint. To fit something into, and I I thought this was a decent. A decent thing to fit into a small footprint, so.
Additional, oh, sorry, Alder Kemp.
So I just want to clarify, what we looked at tonight did include a playground on the property, correct?
Mr. Sayer?
I'm I'm looking.
It did. It was in the upper northeast corner of it.
So while you're looking, what I would just add to what Alder Cole just said is that. If this space is gonna be redeveloped, I understand, because this is not actually very far from my own home. The resistance to having a four-story building, but if the alternative is a three-story building that is actually much closer.
to the homes that are, are existing, I would prefer to have the, uh, building be closer to West Verona Avenue and have more green space in the back. Uh, the other thing I'd be interested in, um, and Alder Kemp brought that up as well in terms of making the connections of, is there a way that we could do some road improvement? Um, that could link, um, across West Verona Avenue, um, to make it safer for kids to travel to the green space that's gonna be where, um, Sugar Creek sits now, because there will be green space there. Um, but the fact that, that they have, that the current developer that North Point has responded to, um, some of the issues that were brought up. Perhaps not as quickly as we had hoped after the neighborhood meeting, but I, I do think it's a positive sign that they are willing to, um, listen and be responsive. So I, I think this is a, a good development. Um, I like that there's the mixed use that it, there's commercial and residential. I really like the workforce housing. And as I said, you know, i- it's gonna be a change in the neighborhood. Um, but if it's gonna happen, I would, my preference would be to have the building sit farther away from current homes rather than closer to it.
Uh, Mr. Sayre, uh, okay, uh, Mr. Sayre and then Alder Journey. I have a clarification of the text you sent. So we do have to vote on this?
Yes, there needs to be a motion on this, correct?
Okay, but the motion should be, should the motion be in favor of it? And then people who are against it, vote against it, or?
It, it should be a motion with majority behind it. So if there's a motion to deny it, or if there's a motion to approve it, there should be a motion in some, in some fashion.
Gotcha. I suppose we could start out with a motion to deny since that came from Plan Commission, and if it failed, then we would do a subsequent motion, an affirmative one, is that?
I think that'd be acceptable. I'm sure the city attorney will let me know if that's, he's, he's called tonight, so he'll let me know if it's incorrect.
Oh yeah, Brian's on here, okay. Um, Alder Journey?
So I, I've been having this, the same, uh, argument inside, inside my head. But the, uh, positives about the, um, project keep coming out to me in terms of the affordable housing, um, the, uh, partnership with the bank, uh, the use of solar panels, uh, the rooftop garden, uh, the fact that, um, because of their, um, um, county help, they will not need TIF or city assistance in the project. Um, and also the, um, minority developer and the thirty years of affordable, um, housing guarantee. Though, um, I do also, um, have some concern about the, the four stories. But I guess that was answered for me, um, when they showed the alternative by, um, having to uh, have the building closer to the neighborhood. And then I also had the concern about the, um, uh, residents on the first floor on Verona Avenue. But that also was kind of an answer for me, uh, in terms of, uh, bringing people out into the community. Uh, and then I also noticed that on the backside of the building, uh, there were entrance and exit areas there for, um, children uh, to use the, uh, playground area.
Uh, further, uh, discussion or motions? And as Mr. Sayre noted, we do need a motion. Uh, Alder Ricky and then Alder Ryan?
Um, I guess I do have to say that I like the, um, the walkouts that they have now. I, I, in the new material that the, um, developers sent us, I think it's more updated than what's in our packet. Um, is, are those stairs on the front and the back of the building?
Uh, Mr. Sayre?
I haven't looked at these in detail, um, but yes, it looks like there'd be stairs on both sides.
Okay, cuz I, I mean, that almost makes them seem more like townhouses than apartments. And, um, I, I like that for, um, the workforce, like the family-sized units especially. And also, um, I, I just wasn't sure about how comfortable I was with them being so close to the street, but it sounds like maybe, with more stories, it would be further away from the street. Um, so I guess I want clarification on that as well. And I guess I, I usually, I support shared parking among businesses throughout the city. But I feel like if, um, there really isn't going to be enough parking for the residents, where will it go? It will go onto the street and I don't like that idea, um, because we have long winters in Wisconsin and with plowing, that could get to be an issue. So I guess could maybe Adam or somebody speak to that, like how much of an issue is the parking problem?
Uh, Mr. Sayre?
I think the, the issue is depending on the tenant. So we know, we know one of the tenants, there could possibly be one or two more. So until those other two tenants are known, you know, that, that's always the challenge. It, it depends on who the tenant is, if it's a fitness type user, which I would, I would doubt just because the noise component being so close to people living above them, but it, you know, those, those tend to drive higher parking demands versus if it's a a, you know, an office-type use, those are pretty kind of set in place. So I mean, assuming it's a low-volume tenant, it wouldn't be a problem, but if it was a high-volume tenant of some type of food or fitness-type use, those do generate additional traffic demands. I think from a staff standpoint, you know, we, we weren't concerned at this point just because there appears to be sufficient parking on the property. Because you know the bank and you've got roughly three thousand square feet left, but that's something that we'd have to finalize once the tenants are known.
Alder Ryan? Hope you're muted.
Sorry, I think I have three questions. Um, the first is, uh, when we looked at, uh, the St. Ambrose development recently, I think we talked about uh, the adjacent streets being marked as, um, no parking, or at least, or no parking during certain hours. And I wonder if that would be a possible solution. If, if indeed there is a, I mean, it, it sounds like a Mr. Sayre saying that there really isn't a parking issue, um, but would that be an alternative? Would that be a, you know, a, a way to, appease people or sort of give people peace of mind? Um, maybe it's a rhetorical question. The second question is, um, if in, is, is a three-story building still an option? And I guess I, I sort of have a similar question as Alder Ricky. How close does that put it to the street? And how close does that put it to the, you know, to the folks at the back there? And, and then my third question is if there is a vote this evening, and that vote is, uh, against, what, what happens next?
Uh, Mr. Sayre, my, my understanding, I'll just answer the parking one, is I mean, that's at the discretion of the council. The council can ban parking or allow parking anywhere. So if you wanted to ban parking in front of your street, you could introduce a motion, but like you probably shouldn't do that. Mr. Sayre?
You're spot on with the parking comment, Luke. That's correct. It's at your discretion. Um, regarding the three-story, I, I, I think the challenge with that is if, if there was a three-story project, and I, and I've talked to the applicant about this is, you know, we'd, we'd have to take that back. That'd be a new public hearing. That'd be a new project. I would have to go back to the, the Plan Commission. I mean, that's a pretty, it's a pretty significant change that I think, you know, especially if the buildings kind of shift, shifting in the L shape of kind of how that adjusts into the neighborhood there. I, I, you know, what I've advised the applicant is that we need to go back to the Plan Commission to kind of have a new public hearing and kind of restart the process. And the cha, the challenge with that is the tax credit deadline for WEDA is, I believe, December eleventh, if I'm not mistaken. And there just, there wouldn't be enough time to get that public hearing notice published and get that approval, potential approval in place to meet that deadline. So that, that's the one challenge with the three-story. Um, and then I think you had a question about just the denial, kind of what happens after that. Ultimately, I'd be able to develop or what they choose to do of, you know, if they choose to kind of continue holding on to the property or moving on. I mean, part of this is the tax credit component to as well, which is, you know, the, the key component for the, the project that we did tax credit. So there's a chance they, 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 they walk away. Ultimately, that's the risk of any denial.
Alder Ryan?
Uh, thank you. Um, I guess my supplementary question then is, you know, the, the vote from Plan Commission was five oh against. And, uh, perhaps to Alder Cole, um, did, you know, the commission appreciate that if indeed it's a no vote that they, the totality, the property is going to continue to sit there undeveloped and I, you know, did they think that through and how did they feel about that? Because I guess as I sit here now, having listened to my colleagues, I'm, I'm now on the fence and I would rather see something than nothing, I guess is my, is my personal view.
If I may, I understand, uh, Alder Cole was dropped off because of connection issues? Cause yeah, no, I, yeah.
Yeah, so I wasn't actually present for this particular vote because, yeah, I got kicked out of Zoom. So, um, the mayor or, um, Adam could probably, uh, describe more about what happened.
Yeah, I think that was, I mean, that's at least from my perspective, yeah, that's always a possibility that if, if you say no, people might not come back. And of course, you know, it, it, from Plan Commission, it's a recommendation. And so I knew it would go to the council as well. Um, I think my understanding, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, is my understanding is that one of the property owners, uh, uh, is interested in being, uh, or the classic is being interested, I, I've heard is being interested in shut down in twenty twenty-one. So if that's an empty building, maybe they'll sell it to another restaurant, or maybe they'll sell it to a different developer or the same developer. I mean, in, in line with, with, um, some of the other comments that Alders have made. I mean, there's a, there's a, I would say a pretty good chance that that site will get redeveloped just because of how valuable the land is. And in its current shape, it's not, it, it's not maximizing profit, you know, and I, 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 I always hate to sometimes think of things that way, but like the land's really valuable. And so you, you gotta figure someone's gonna come back at some point just because it's worth a lot of money. But that's my take on it. Any, uh, further discussion or does someone want to take a crack at a motion?
I'll, I'll try and do a motion here.
Sure, Alder Kemp?
Yes, let's see here. I'd like to make a motion recommending denial of Resolution Number R dash two zero dash zero four zero for a general development plan for planned unit development for a four-story seventy-five unit apartment building with six thousand eight hundred ninety-five square feet, commercial space located at four ten and four twenty West Verona Avenue.
Uh, just to clarify, that's a motion to deny, not a motion to recommend denial.
That's, that's correct.
Got it. Cause council is the final authority. So, motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alder Posey? Uh, motion before the body? Uh, any, uh, discussion on the motion to deny, which of course, if you're interested in denying, you would vote yes. If you're not interested in denying the project, then you vote no. But any, uh, further discussion on this topic? And just for clarity's sake, uh, we will make this a roll call vote. Seeing no, uh, hands, uh, Mr. Sayre, if you would, uh, read the roll. Alder Person Touche?
Aye.
Alder Person Cronin?
No.
Alder Person Journey?
No.
Alder Person Kemp? Uh, you're muted.
Aye.
Was I? Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Alder Person Cole?
No.
Alder Person Co, Posey?
Aye.
Alder Person Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Person Ryan?
Aye.
So I have, uh, five in favor of denial and three against. Yes. Okay, so it, the denial passes, uh, five to three. Uh, and with that, we'll move on to, uh, nine B, uh, five. Uh, Alder Cole?
Right. Um, next up is just a discussion regarding a planned unit development concept plan for a two-story, four thousand square foot building for a clinic with two apartments located at three hundred East Verona Avenue. The applicant is proposing a planned unit development concept for a two-story, four thousand square foot building for a clinic with two apartment units located at three hundred East Verona Ave. The Plan Commission discussed the project on October fifth, twenty twenty. Comments from the Plan Commission included support for the central commercial setback requirements instead of the downtown design and use overlay zone requirements. The building is a good design, great land use, nice to have apartment units above the clinic and a garage for the tenants. An agreement that the general development plan and precise implementation plan can be combined into one step instead of two separate steps and applications. The council is requested to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept. No formal motion is required as this is a conceptual review of the project.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, leading. Um, does anyone have feedback on this project? Uh, Alder Journey?
Um, I think it's a nice project. It's a good-looking building. Um, looks like it's gonna be a couple of good residents in there. Um, and we can always use, um, good healthcare in Verona.
Uh, any further feedback on this development? Uh, Alder Posey?
I would also agree. I thought it was a really great design. I actually was just reading the note about the parking stalls facing away from neighbors to limit light shining. So really thought put into even just the angle of the parking, and I'm sure that probably happens a lot of places, but we don't get to see it noted necessarily. Um, but I really, it was a great design and I look forward to seeing it in that location.
Uh, Alder Touche?
Uh, yeah, love this one. Easy. Yes. Thank you.
That was very succinct. Other feedback on this project? I'll just throw my own two cents in. Yeah, I like this project a lot. I think it's, it, you know, uh, uh, potential apartments are good. Just, you know, a couple of them, I think that fits in the neighborhood, uh, pretty well. And I think, yeah, like, uh, Alder Journey said, I think, you know, healthcare is good. Um, so I, I hope, I hope the project advances. Uh, any additional comments on this one? Seeing none. Uh, Mr. Sayre, did, did you get all the feedback necessary on this project?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Um, anything further from Plan Commission?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to, uh, nine C, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to ma, I am making a motion to approve easements for parcel number one, A, B, C, and D, located along Badger Mill Creek for project ID twenty eighteen dash one oh eight, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor. And I'm reading from the notes and I'm worried, I think it's actually parcel number three, which is what?
Yeah, yeah, that's what it says on the agenda. Mr. Sayre, do you have clarification for us?
Yeah, no, he was right. He corrected me. So it's just written here wrong. So it is parcel number three, A, B, C, D, located along Badger Mill Creek for project ID twenty eighteen dash one oh eight. East Side Sanitarious Sewer Interceptor replacement contingent upon city administrator and city attorney review.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Um, second about Alder Ryan, I think. Uh, Alder Touche?
Thank you. Uh, the East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor is for the replacement of the sewer from Bruce Street to the lands just north of Arbor Vidy Place. The project includes replacement of the fifteen-inch interceptor that was constructed back in nineteen sixty to increase capacity and replace the ancient infrastructure. The Madison Metropolitan Sewer District, or MMSD, is a significant partner in, excuse me, in relation to design permitting and construction of the project and is paying for their portion of the project as agreed to in the previously executed agreements. With MMSD partnering on this project by installing a relief force main on pipe on city lands, they ultimately need easements of their own from the city. The city, uh, the area of acquisition varies depending upon the location, but is still within the same quarter as the city's new interceptor sewer. The permanent limited easement will remain with the, with the asset, but the temporary limited easement will abolish at determination of the project. An overview figure that parcel numbers is included in our materials, the easements would be dedicated to MMSD ultimately due to the partnership between the city and MMSD. This project has created econ, economies of scale due to larger quantities of bid items. Therefore, saving both us money and long-term. Therefore, saving both us money and long-term in the long run and, and only impacting the quarter once. This does not include the cost of savings on other elements, including but not limited to design, other easements and site investigations that have been split per the memorandum of understanding executed between the city and MMSD back in February of last year. All parcels are located along the Badger Mill Creek and more specifically, parcel A is at Fireman's Park, B is just north of South Main Street, C is just south of Lincoln Street Bridge, D is near Arbor Vity Place. And so three is the Lincoln Street Bridge.
Thank you. Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the easements for parcel three, A, B, C, and D, located along Badger Mill Creek for Project ID 2018-108, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement with the contingency specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And the motion passes. Alder Touche.
Thank you. Next up, I'm making a motion to approve a professional service agreement for construction-related services in regard to Project ID 2018-108, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement. Costs is not to exceed $54,604. Any agreement shall be contingent upon city administrator and city attorney review.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alder Journey. Alder Touche.
Thank you. The consulting services agreement with Short Elliott Hendrickson is for the attendance and administration of monthly progress meetings, product and shop drive and review, and respond to requests from information for their design documents during construction. The contract also includes as-built field survey and record drawing creation at completion of the project. The, the construction inspection will be completed by our city staff. Saves us a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of approving a professional services agreement for construction-related services regards to Project ID 2018-108, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor with the contingency specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And the motion passes. Anything further from Public Works?
That is all.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to 9D Personnel Committee. Alder Kemp.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to make a motion recommending the council approval of amendments to City Administrative Policy Number Four, Personnel Policy Section 3-18 regarding compensation.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky. Alder Kemp.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page 175 of your packet, almost the last page, second to the last page, you can see there is redline language that is being adopted with respect to the cost of living adjustment for individuals, for salary adjustments for individuals that work for the city. Adam, did you want to address any more specifics? I think it's essentially the date, isn't that correct?
Correct. It's the date from a processing standpoint. So we, from an administrative standpoint, we'd like to have the cost of living adjustments going to effect at the earliest payroll to January 1st. So that, in essence, people would be getting the cost of living possibly a few days before January 1st, but in no case, it would be after January 1st. So just trying to get on our payroll schedule, so it's not an administrative challenge for us to try to calculate a couple of days of COLA and having to do it outside of the actual program itself. So this saves us time long-term.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor of approving the amendments to City Administrative Policy Number Four, Personnel Party. Personnel Policy, geez, Section 3-18 regarding compensation, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? And the motion passes. Anything further from personnel?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to item 10, New Business. First up, we have 10A, which is a discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number R dash 20 dash 041, requesting exemption from the Dane County Library Tax. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. This is something that we do every year. Since the city of Verona funds its own library, which exceeds the minimum standards established by the Dane County Board, the city may request an exemption from paying the Dane County Library Tax. In order to maintain this exemption, the city needs to take action each year to formally make a request to Dane County Board for the exemption. The proposed resolution will exempt the city from the Dane County Library Tax. So once again, this is something that we do, we do every year kind of around this time as part of the budget process.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions on this item?
I move to approve.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alder Posey, I believe. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Resolution Number R dash 20 dash 041, requesting exemption from the Dane County Library Tax, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. And next up, we have 10B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Use of Public Funds for Development at 420 Church Avenue and 100 South Marietta Street. Before we go into closed session, can we get a brief overview on this topic, Mr. Sayer?
Sure. This is for the former Sugar Creek Elementary School, New Century School property. So this is potentially for the redevelopment project that was discussed and voted on tonight for the Steve Brown Alexander proposal. The developers of the property at 420 Church Avenue and 100 South Marietta Street have requested tax increment financing for the project. Staff is requesting a closed session with the common council to discuss the developers' request. This was something that was actually identified within the RFP as well, too. So this is kind of, doesn't come as a surprise that we're having this conversation, but it is to discuss the request for, for tip for that project.
Thank you for that. Anything, anyone wants to make note of in open session? Alder Touche.
Thank you. I'm, Mr. Mayor. I might be stating the obvious, but we're giving them land to use and they're also asking for tip. Is that right?
I think all that is kind of wrapped into the negotiation potentially because there is no development agreement yet in place. But that is potentially the case.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear. I mean, that's a lot.
My, my, my only, my only comment is, is as far as negotiations on this, that is, you know, why we have negotiations, because that's all those components tied together.
Thank you.
Alder Kemp. Okay. Um, yeah, no, I, I, I'm just gonna, I'll comment as well. I'm not, not necessarily opposed to tip on this project, but I think, you know, it needs to be structured in such a way as to protect the city. And as Alder Touche said, we, I mean, they are getting the land. You know, I mean, we're getting, I think we're getting a really good project out of it, you know, which is great for the public and for the city. But I, I well, I guess we can talk about numbers and other conditions when we get into it. So unless anyone has anything else to say, a motion to go into closed session would be in order. Alder Cole.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session for use of public funds for development at 420 Church Avenue and 100 South Marietta Streets. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Section 19.85 Per N1 Per N E of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. The common council may reconvene in open session and take action on the closed session item.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alder Cronin. Mr. Sayer, if you would read the roll.
Alder Person Ryan.
Aye.
Alder Person Touche.
Aye.
Alder Person Cronin.
Aye.
Alder Person Journey.
Aye.
Alder Person Kemp.
Aye.
Alder Person Cole.
Aye.
Alder Person Posey.
Aye.
Alder Person Ricky.
Aye.
So I set out instructions for this. So you have any questions? The same process as before. Log off of this, then log in, I think Evan's gone already, log off of this, and then log into the Zoom meeting, and I'll keep this one going.
And the email has the word closed in it. So if you need to search through your email, so.
All right. Thank you.